So we'll go ahead and start, or call this August 25th Regular Planning Commission Meeting to order. And please allow me to read a statement that's necessary during the COVID-19 pandemic. The Governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The Governor also issued Executive Order N-33-20, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The Executive Order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the City of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing a Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using our question-and-answer functionality of the tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the questions-and-answer section of the app is located at the bottom of the Zoom screen that, well, is bottom of your Zoom screen. And for those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question-and-answer portion of the app, and be sure to state the item on which you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed, or the item has been discussed by Planning Commission and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. Thank you for your opportunity to listen to that statement. We'll go ahead and ask for roll call.
Chairwoman Blake?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Silman?
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Adams? Commissioner Brookman? Commissioner Dale? Commissioner Dasher?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dasher, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) by the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to the public comment section for items not listed on the agenda. So do we have any written comments?
There are no written comments.
Okay, and so do we have any interested citizens in the audience this evening that would like to speak to the Planning Commission on an item that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and continue on with our agenda. Fellow commissioners or staff, do we have any agenda modifications?
So, yeah, so unfortunately, due to, we have a quorum for the meeting, but due to the item regarding Lincoln East specific plan, and the recusals, potential recusals of planning commissioners that are in that conflict area, we do not have a quorum on that item. And so I'm going to have to request that we postpone that item, continue it to a date certain, which would then be at the Planning Commission meeting in September, which is scheduled right now for the second, as it, yeah, calendar, the fourth Wednesday in September, which is September 22nd at 6:00. And so, you know, basically, we have had where we read into the record for those people here. I know that a lot of efforts come in tonight for people to show up and then speak and hear that. Technically, that with the public hearing being postponed until that date, that's when it would need to be read in the record and when it's considered. But we definitely, I could share my email and share my phone number, so over the next month, as we're waiting for this item to come back before the Planning Commission, if there's any thoughts or concerns that you want to share with me, I could definitely make sure we take that in and it's addressed or discussed when you have that opportunity to share that, or when I do my presentation on it. So that's where we're at with the item, I don't have the agenda in front of me, agenda item number six.
Thank you, Ben. So to clarify to everyone in the audience, agenda item number six will be continued to a commission meeting in September, we're looking at September 22nd at this point. And I'd like to state, Mr. Swearingen, we have your written request, and we'll keep it on file. So when we readdress this item, we will ensure that your comments are either read, or hopefully you can be here at the next meeting to give your further comments.
So if we have his contact information, we definitely can. I want to make sure we're clear to the group in attendance that they're with us continuing to a date certain, there will not be another mailer. And so this will, so it's continued to September 22nd at 6:00 p.m.
Number 22nd. And Mr. Swearingen, if you want to come up here and give us your phone number, because I have your address on this flyer, I'd be more than happy to ensure staff get you the information you're requesting. Thank you for your comments. And our apologies that we did not have a quorum for that specific agenda item, so any of you who wish to leave, you may at this point, if you are here for that specific agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Swearingen. Otherwise, we'll continue to move on. We are looking, yes, absolutely. Yes.
If you could put on here to Zoom, what to do exactly to be invited on to Zoom? I have Zoom app, and I don't know how to get it on.
Okay, you, thank you. Commissioner Dasher is bringing you a document that will assist you. So please do note in your calendar, September 22nd, for the next opportunity to speak to the Lincoln East specific plan. Thank you, Commissioner. So fellow commissioners, we'll move to agenda item number four, the Approval of the Minutes, minutes from June 23rd, 2021. Do I have any additions, suggestions?
I have none.
With that, I'll take a motion?
Move approval of the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Dasher?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman Silman?
Yes.
Chairwoman Blake?
Yes, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number five. This is a business item, the consideration of a requested-to-year extension of time for use permit 07-13. And unfortunately, staff just walked out, but Ashley will come up, who's our other staff, and provide us with a report.
Hello, I just make sure this works. I think it does. Hello, everyone. My name is Ashley Potocznik, and the item that we'll be addressing tonight is for a use permit time extension for Calvary Christian Center. The location, this is located at the southeast corner, let me grab my notes, of State Route 20 and El Margarita, as you can see on the map. It's a 23-acre parcel, and the use permit was approved for a sanctuary building, an elementary school, an outdoor playground, as well as baseball and soccer facilities. You can see here the timeline and the history of the project. So it was originally approved in 2009, and since then, there have been five extension requests that were approved by the Planning Commission. This will be the sixth request for extension. And should the current request be granted tonight by the Planning Commission, the permit would expire on August 25th, 2023. This is an image of the proposed sanctuary building, as well as the site plan that was approved by the Planning Commission originally. You can see on the site plan some of the elements that are included in this use permit and this development proposal. The project is proposed to be completed in phases. There will be three phases where the sanctuary will be built first, and then the elementary school, and then the outdoor facilities. And this will include adequate parking, as well as landscaping that you saw in the site plan before. At full buildout, the sanctuary will serve as a religious sanctuary and gathering place for the community. These renderings kind of show what the sanctuary would look like. Staff has reviewed the original use permit application, and per our municipal code, we can grant extensions for these type of use permits. And so we have reviewed everything and found that the use permit extension is valid, and that's why we bring this item before you tonight. And we, we propose that with this, you know, it's been a tough time for development. COVID-19 has been hard, particularly on religious facilities, as well as other businesses. And so we propose that this use permit extension is granted for one additional time. With that, our recommendation to the Planning Commission is to approve a two-year extension of time for use permit 07-13 pursuant to City Municipal Code Section 8-57106, resulting in a new expiration date of August 25th, 2023.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah, and I wanted to note that we also have the pastor here, as well as project representatives, if they want to answer any questions or speak on the project as well.
Absolutely. In the meantime, since you're right there, fellow commissioners, you have any questions for staff?
I have not.
Okay, hearing none. Pastor, would you like to speak to the project?
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Much appreciated, and we're very grateful for your patience, and we've all been through 19 months of challenges, have we not? And in that scope, we're still thankful that there's been substantial funding put back for our building project over those two years that we've had for this last extension. And we've had some very positive news that's been very helpful to us. Coming out of some of the lockdowns, we immediately, this past June and July, got three brokers, two from out of the area, one from our local area, making proposals to purchase some of the acreage that we have. To refresh everyone, we are selling off some of the acreage. We had done that with John L. Sullivan's business, and we have a few more we'd like to sell off because of the impact that that brings to our project financially. I have no desire, nor does our leadership, to put our church in great debt in order to put up this new campus, so we've been saving, and we've sold off some acreage, and we're believing that we will have more to put into the pot here very shortly, because on Monday, the 23rd of August, another local broker contacted me directly. No one knows that yet, except you. This is how fast that's happened. He said, "We should have a contract in hand probably within the next week or so. They're interested in a minimum of four acres, possibly up to eight. We can still use the footprint that we've originally proposed in order to build our campus and facility out. And if either one of those comes through, in addition to the two buyers that are waiting for us to sell our current campus, we can turn some soil pretty fast." So we're pretty excited about that, and I don't know what's happened in the climate. I know we've all been through these 19 months of stressors, but coming out of that, there seems to be a move toward business, pro-business in our community, and an openness now to look for good-looking parcels of land. We just happen to own one of the best-looking parcels of land in Yuba City, and we're very fortunate and blessed to have that. So it's attracted some attention, in fact, quite a bit of it. We've had a previous contract that came to us. Unfortunately, they were trying to steal the property from us, and we weren't about to do that. We've got quite a bit invested there in terms of improvements, as well as, of course, paying that all off, and so we, we're not about to give it away, but we hope with reasonable contract being brought to us shortly, something positive should come out of that. We're pretty excited about that right now. So that's kind of where we're at, to bring everybody up to speed. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, but thank you for being patient with us. It's been a while, but again, our purpose for waiting is so that we don't create a lot of debt and burden to the family that resides there on our campus. We've watched that turn into very negative scenarios in a lot of places around the country, biting off a little more than you can chew, and then it becomes a negative for the entire community, as well as the church.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
And congratulations on your business prospect.
Thank you.
Fellow commissioners, any questions of the pastor? If hearing none, is anyone in the audience, would they like to speak to, for, against this extension? Otherwise, I'll look to the commission for a motion.
I have a quick question. Go ahead.
Sorry. Commissioner Silman?
I just have quick questions for staff.
Okay.
How many extensions are we allowed on an application like this?
There's no limit.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Your code has no limit on the number of extensions that may be granted for these sorts of application.
Thank you, and I have another question. So with the sale off of the land to John L. Sullivan, and the sale off of a couple more of these parcels, have you gone through and rereviewed all of the conditions of approval to see if any of those might require adjustment with the fact that there's not as much acreage that may get used for this actual specific plan that they have?
Staff has looked at the original conditions of approval with Public Works as well, and we've found that, that the conditions of approval are still valid. If, you know, when other pieces of land are sold off, if that comes to be, then something like a parcel map would probably be required, and then that will come before the Planning Commission.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Silman?
Oh, I thought you were asking for the vote, I'm sorry.
Well, please, if you would like to make a motion, I think we're done with questions. Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve a two-year extension of time for the use permit 07-13 pursuant to City Municipal Code Section 8-5.7106, resulting in a new expiration date of August 25th, 2023.
Thank you. Hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. May I get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Dasher?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman Silman?
Yes.
Chairwoman Blake?
Yes. Congratulations on your extension.
Thank you.
Thank you all. So we will move, as you know, we're skipping item number six. To repeat once again, we will continue that item to September 22nd at 6:00 p.m. So moving on to agenda item seven, an addendum to the City of Yuba City General Plan EIR in 2021 to 2029, City of Yuba City General Plan Housing Element. We'll look to Ben and Placeworks, our consultants, for a presentation.
Okay, good evening, Chairwoman, and members of the commission. And so what we have here with this item is a, is the next step, telling off our last study session that we had with, with the commission on the housing element. And so, so with this, it needs to come before the Planning Commission for a review and a recommendation to the City Council, and then ultimately to the City Council for adoption to meet state, state law regarding the timeframe on how often it needs to be updated. And so Placeworks is, is our consultant that's been working with us to bring this into, you know, in alignment with the city's needs, and also with the state requirements. And Nicole West and Jennifer are online, and so I'll turn it over to them to do the presentation.
Welcome, thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicole West, I'm with Placeworks, and we also have Jennifer Gestellum here, and Patrick Heinmarsh, and Mark Teague, so we've got the whole team. Let me start my slideshow. All right. Thank you for having us tonight. We are here to talk about the housing element update, and as Ben said, thank you for that introduction, and we have come before you previously. So tonight, we'll talk about the, what is the housing element, and the schedule, the components that go into the document, the regional housing needs allocation, and the housing element action items. We'll talk about the HCD initial 60-day review process, and touch on the SEQUA document that goes along with the housing element, as well as finish off with requesting the recommended action from the commissioners. So as an overview, the housing element is a plan for accommodating Yuba City's fair share of the regional housing need, and it is intended to help preserve, improve, and facilitate the development of housing accessible for all income levels. So we have a deadline to adopt the document by September 10th to stay on an eight-year cycle, otherwise it would go to a four-year cycle. And the housing element is reviewed and certified by the State Housing and Community Development Department. So as we mentioned, we came before you in April, and then after that, a public review draft housing element was released. HCD, it's kind of an iterative process. First, they do a review and then provide feedback so that the city has a chance to make updates to the document in response to their initial review. So that occurred, and then the revised public draft was released on the website at the end of July, and those revisions were resubmitted to HCD. So we're here today, August 25th, and then the plan is to go to the City Council and request that they adopt the housing element on September 7th, keeping the city on the eight-year cycle. And then after the adoption, the document goes back to HCD for the 90-day certification So the housing element has several chapters, and it looks at the existing and projected housing needs. There's also a newly required chapter that is an assessment of fair housing. It also includes an approach to accommodating the regional housing need allocation, which I'll talk more about in just a minute. Another component is the analysis of potential constraints on housing, and an evaluation of the previous housing element. It also has the goals, policies, and implementation programs that will carry you through the planning period, and I'll talk a little bit about that more as well. So the regional housing needs allocation, this is, HCD initially determines a number, and then each region has to allocate those units. And so being in SECOG, the Sacramento area region, you received, Yuba City received the allocation of 3,308 new housing units. And then there was a carryover from last cycle that related to some annexations that did not occur, resulting in the need to figure out where housing could be accommodated for roughly 3,800 new units. And again, it's not a mandate to build anything, it's just showing the potential where land is available. So the approach to meeting this arena is to look at the capacity on existing vacant and non-vacant sites, and to quantify the anticipated development within the specific plans that are already in city boundaries. We can also include some projected accessory dwelling units as a way to accommodate future housing. And then if needed, and in this case, we do need this, but sometimes it is necessary to redesignate or rezone land if there isn't an adequate amount of existing vacant and non-vacant sites that have the zoning that is needed to allow a minimum density that is considered appropriate for accommodating higher-density homes that could be affordable to people with lower incomes and households with lower incomes. So there is a program in the housing element to accommodate this need for rezoning and redesignating, and the sites do need to be rezoned by May 15th, 2022. The housing element identifies candidate sites for rezoning, but the final list has not yet been determined. And so this leads right into the housing element action items. There are several things that are going to the programs that is a high-level policy guide for moving forward throughout the planning program, and these are some of the key ones that we've pulled out for you here. A lot of the other ones really relate to collaborating with nonprofit agencies and strengthening and continuing some existing efforts and relationships. But as you can see here, some of the other things that are included to encourage housing is making it more feasible for residential development to occur on some commercially-zoned and designated sites. And it doesn't mean that it's a requirement, it's just allowing it and giving the city more flexibility. We wanted to make sure that there was an adequate buffer of available sites so that as projects do come forward, the city will be able to approve the ones that are appropriate for it. So then you see there's the redesignate and rezone program, which applies to approximately 10 acres, and will then allow for higher-density residential development in that area, in those areas, once they're selected. And then there's some other zoning code updates that are needed to comply with state law, and those pertain to dwell, accessory dwelling units, and the density bonus ordinance, and then creating objective design standards, as well as different little tweaks to make sure that the city is compliant with state law regarding transitional and supportive housing, and reasonable accommodation procedures, and housing for farmworkers. And then there's also, one of the larger new programs has to do with several steps to affirmatively further fair housing. So as I mentioned before, HCD does an initial review to give the city an opportunity to make corrections or tweak the document so that it can be lined up then to get compliance during that 90-day compliance review. So we went through that process and responded to their comments. The project team revised the draft and then submitted those revisions. Subsequently, HCD did provide a letter with some findings, but those are super minor, and those are some things that can be taken care of and are already in the revised document that you see with your agenda packet. And then the, so the revised document was posted on the city's website for public comment as well. And then the SEQUA document that goes along with the housing element evaluates the programs to make sure that environmental impacts are evaluated, but since no specific sites are identified to be rezoned in the document, there's no immediate change to the existing land use conditions. And already, city policies address the impacts that the housing element will have, so there are no new adverse impacts that are expected as a result of the housing element. We are here tonight to ask the commissioners to review, approve, and forward the addendum and housing element to the City Council for adoption and authorization to submit the document to the state for the 90-day certification process. So we would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Nicole. Prior to turning it over to the commission, being a public hearing, I'm going to open a public hearing, and seeing no members in the audience, ask Ashley if we have any public comments related to agenda item seven online?
No public comments.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and take it back to the commissioners for any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Yeah, I have, I have a question. So it's, the questions that I have center around a specific part of the addendum that you did, where it is on the second page here, it goes on, it says, it says, "The General Plan EIR determine the implementations of the general plan..." determined the implementations of the general plan would result insignificant and unavoidable impacts to the following environmental topics, one of which is open space and ag. And I'm just curious, how much ag land will we be losing based on your proposed housing element? And what percentage of the total ag land that we have in Yuba City would that represent?
So I don't know if Mark or if Shannon wants to jump in on this, but, so that's a reference to the original EIR finding from the general plan. So when the general plan was adopted in 2004, based on saying it was a significant impact, because at that time, the general plan identifies its sphere of influence as what that, we are taking ag land. And so what you're looking at before you is the housing element, which is a portion of that general plan, and really, we're not taking any more land in into consideration. What we're saying is that 10 acres is going to be a higher density. We're going to have to rezone 10 acres and put in some programs to allow more housing within that existing area. So we're not taking any more additional ag space, is what's being proposed.
Oh, okay, okay. And then the second comment on that, where it talks about these unavoidable impacts, it talks about air quality, and it mentions that, you know, the development under the general plan could lead to increased emissions of carbon monoxide and ozone precursors that exceed air district thresholds. What is the thought on how much will it exceed? Are we talking about just barely exceed? Are we talking about a fair amount over what the thresholds are?
So Mark, are you online? My understanding is we're really referencing background stuff from the original EIR?
Patrick Heinmarsh is actually here, yes.
Okay.
That is correct. Those are references to the general plan EIR and the impacts identified in that EIR. So there will be some change in land uses associated with the housing element, but it's not going to be a substantial change from that that was identified in the general plan EIR.
Okay.
The changes in land use aren't going to be such that it's going to trip yet another threshold.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Commissioner Silman, do you have any questions? I can't see your face.
Nope, no questions.
Okey-dokey, thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the hard work that this takes, so I hope that we can make a recommendation to city council. I'll look for a motion.
Move approval consistent with staff's recommendation on item number seven.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Thanks, Ashley.
Commissioner Dasher?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman Silman?
Yes.
Chairwoman Blake?
Yes. Thank you. When do you foresee that item going before city council?
So currently, we're planning for it to go September 7, so we meet the deadline.
Oh, good.
So it's pretty immediate, so we're going to turn it around, have the public notice go in the newspaper, and it's going to them soon.
Good, good. All right, so future agenda items.
So thank you, Placeworks, we appreciate the help, and we'll be in contact soon.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so we've worked through, so where are we at, future agenda items?
You can just lump them all in one, Ben.
Yeah, you know, so, let me grab my sheet here. Okay, so appreciate the patience tonight with the Lincoln East item, but we'll work through it and get that back on the agenda for the 22nd. So really, what's, well, two things. I sent out a August Development Services update into your email this evening, so you'll see, basically, I've done, we do kind of a bi-monthly update, you've seen in the past of the major building and different projects that are running through. And so on that, you'll see everything from the status of the Burger King that's coming in on Bogue, to, you know, Starbucks getting close for the certificate of occupancy. And so regarding future agenda items, it's in the bottom of that email. But what we have currently working through is that we're going to be considering the West Sandborne Estate subdivision map, so that's at the corner of Bogue and Sandborne. With that, it's tied with the Lincoln East specific plan decision, and so that might get bumped a month.
Got it.
And then we have Rivers Edge Apartments, and so the Rivers Edge Apartments on Lincoln, I'm not sure how familiar you are with that, it's kind of a longstanding project from 2015, it's coming back before the commission for to increase it from 172 to 196. Same footprint, but they're basically proposing to change a few of the buildings to three-story, and from two-story to three-story with a development agreement. We have an use permit application on Bridge Street towards Pluma Street, there's a residential, there's some odd zoning going on there, there's a residential location that wants to be an office, and so we'll have something like that come through. And one of the big things on there is the use permit and development permit ordinance update. And so as you're aware, we did an update to the ordinance regarding use permits, that there was a bypass process, that if the city council elected for reasons, that they could bypass it with the use permit, that had a termination date in it, where it was basically on a trial for a year, and then it would terminate. And so what we're doing is going to bring that back to memorialize it, and then with that, we're also considering to have, add the development permit process. So with it, anything for large projects, so say you had a large wholesaler like Costco come in, there would be an option for it, it'd follow the same process where it would go through. And so we're working on that to bring that for consideration. I think that's really for the future agenda items, and well, and then the big one is the cannabis workshop. And so there's a joint workshop on September, it's for the first, it's the first Tuesday, or I'm sorry, the second Tuesday in September, I want to say September 8, I don't want to give it to you wrong.
I can't wait to learn from council what's up.
September 8, and so it's a joint workshop. There's, it's no action, it's a workshop, and it's really a study session where you're going to see presentations from a retailer and a cultivator. They have applications into the city with a request as to if the city is willing to proceed with their applications or not. And what that would lead to is then a, we have a draft ordinance just to discuss what that ordinance would look like, and some of the options regarding zoning, limits on the numbers, procedures on if you do limit the numbers, how do you go about, you know, a system of, you know, vetting those parties, you know, use permit requirements, and various things, what the setbacks are, do you want retail in certain zoning versus not? And so that night, there's, it's really kind of a big question-answer session with the industry, and kind of a show and tell on their different products, and what options would be for consideration.
Hey, Ben, I have a couple of questions real quick. So that's a joint session between who, the commission and the council?
Correct.
And are they having the county planning commission be there as well? Because I'm assuming most of the acreage we're talking about is probably going to be in the county.
So the county is going to be invited, as far as who they request or have come is really up to them.
Okay. Second question, refresh my memory, because maybe I've got this wrong, but was there not a decision made a couple of years ago by, I don't know, I'm assuming it was our council, that they did not want marijuana or that kind of distribution effort or manufacturing here in the city? And if that's the case, what's changed that we're now considering?
Right.
What's that?
And the state law was passed.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, what did this, I know the county did, but what did the state?
So I believe our current ordinance is from 2017 that says no commercial activity.
Correct.
So since that time, I'm not exactly sure when that state law changed compared to when our ordinance got adopted, but there's other agencies are tackling this issue at different levels. The business is definitely up and going in the areas around us, and there's definitely more attention as to proposals that are coming, and there is a different council. So those are kind of the elements that have changed since then.
And there's not much of a concern from the federal level at this point at our local level here, that the feds still have it as a, I mean, maybe the attorney can answer that, but the feds haven't approved it yet.
My understanding, it's against the law federally, and there's no imminent change that anybody's told me that's going to change that.
Okay.
Shannon says correct.
Yeah.
Do you, when's the date of that workshop?
September 8, 6 o'clock, and we're having it at Boyd Hall. And so with anticipation that there'll be some public participation, and it is, and again, that is one of the big things from the meeting, too, the council also wants to hear from the public, their concerns, and maybe, and also to tackle some of those myths, maybe as far as what the smell is versus what the security concerns, and kind of walk through those different types of concerns and hear from the industry and from, you know, from other, what's going on in reality.
Well, I do know that at county board meetings, we've had quite a few public comments, having members remind, or constituents, I should say, remind the county officials that tax dollars are going all around us, you know, potential tax dollars, that is. So it is, I won't be surprised when the county follows your suit on this one.
I'm sure you will hear what the dollar revenue is, and we've actually done a recent tour of one for a staff level, just to kind of understand a little bit more what's going on and what the different procedures are, and they track, when you come in, you have to track your location, you know, where you're from, your residence, and there's some hard numbers as far as who's buying what where.
Okay. Kind of like Costco does.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
It sounds like they were stealing the land, so.
Okay, cool.
Through the chair.
Yes.
We have a comment via Zoom from someone regarding item number six. Would you like to hear that? It's just a question mostly.
Oh, sure.
Go ahead and read it.
So Robert Harlan is asking, because he tuned in late, is my understanding that the Lincoln East specific plan was not discussed and will be brought up on September 22, will another notice go out in the mail to landowners?
If we do not change it, no. If we change it from the September 22 date, yes, we will.
Because it's been announced in a public meeting. Okay. Thank you, Robert Harlan. We all know you as Bob. Anything else, Ben?
For future items, that's all I think I have for the future items. I could go into the Development Services Report, which I kind of led to, but really, Lincoln East specific plan, housing element, we've got some subdivision maps, this Hinson map that we're working through up off of El Margarita and Highway 20, and we've heard some rumblings of another subdivision map coming in. So we got a lot of work on that behind the scenes.
All right. So report of actions, okay, report of actions of the Yuba City Planning Commission and Sutter County update.
Sutter County update, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
We had a public hearing relative to a plan development amendment and design review to establish a recreational vehicle sales and service center that was over three phases. Location of that would be east side of East Onset Road, east of State Highway 99 on the west side of Live Oak Boulevard. The applicant was Emilio and Maria Toche, and that was approved unanimously. And the county commission also went through with the adoption of the 2021 through 29 housing element update for its six-cycle planning period from June this year through August 31 of 2029, and updates to the public health and safety element of that update.
Thank you. And Ben, do you have an update for us for who council chose for our representative onto Sutter? Or did I miss that?
Stacy.
Stacy is, he's official? Okay. Okay. Perhaps that happened when I wasn't here. Thank you. Okay. So with that, I believe that adjourns our meeting tonight, and we're adjourned at 6:49 p.m. Thanks, all.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Shannon.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.